Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the WNESU School Board Meeting.
Hi, everyone. Welcome. It's six o'clock. This is not only the meeting of the regular meeting of the Women Supervisory Women's Board, but also especially then they have as many of all of the boards come here in person. So I'm delighted to have everyone here. I think it would help everyone. Fact TV is here. So let's go around the room and just do some quick. Your name and which board you're representing. Molly, can we start with you, please?
Molly Bannack, representing Westminster, Bellas Falls State Council School Board Chair.
Chris Kibbe, Rockingham School Board and Treasurer of the WNESU.
Rob Wells, Bellas Falls Union High School Board.
David Clark, Bellas Falls Union High School Board, representing Westminster.
Jim McCollum, representing the Rockingham School Board.
Jason Terry, representing the Bellas Falls Union High School School Board and Vice Chair.
Darcie Sperry, High School Board, Grafton, Rethan.
June Streeter, Bellas Falls High School Board and Westminster resident.
Mike Sam, Bellas Falls High School, Rockingham.
Charlie Houston, Westminster School Board Vice Chair.
Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster Board and Chair of the WNESU.
Andy Hopps, Superintendent Schools.
TMBLC Westminster School Board.
Margie Perry, Westminster School Board.
Kate Kane, second grade teacher, Central Elementary.
Carrie Pickering, Reading Interventional, Central Elementary.
Deb Carden, Director of Instruction Innovation. Any one of you?
Jen Keenan, WNESU Early Ed.
And we'll go to those joining us via Zoom. I'll start with you, Hardy. Hardy Merrill, look for the unmuted guys.
Yep, I just unmuted myself. Hardy Merrill, Grafton, Athens, resident of Grafton.
Thank you.
Kathy Siano Goodwin, Grafton, Athens School and also on the SU Board.
Outstanding. Karen?
Karen Blanchard, Westminster School Board.
Very good. And another school board member just joined us. I think Rockingham. Go ahead and introduce yourself. Hi, Caitlin Deshane Desmond, Rockingham School Board. Outstanding. Well, again, welcome, everyone. And as ever, thank you to Fact TV for being here. So those in the community who want to join us at another time and watch later can do so. For those who may not know, in the past, we had joint board meetings of all the boards a few times. And I consider it a really special time. It's nice to get to know a little better all of the other board members. And it's also a pretty effective way to dive into topics in a more efficient way to have all this kind of get inside the subject at the same time. So in that spirit, a couple of those topics provide. And we'll hear from our Director of Innovation and Instruction, Jennifer Carden. And we get an update from our Principal of the Early Childhood Work, Jennifer Keenan, and other topics that are obviously important. This is also a night where we have the opportunity to have a board training, a kind of a refreshing review on some of the legal policies that affect our work. And so we have created the opportunity with Andy's help to bring in one of our counsel, one of our attorneys who will be joining us at seven o'clock tonight. For that purpose, on the advice of counsel, we'll go into an executive session because some of the topics require some confidentiality in terms of guiding board members on what can be difficult subject areas. But with all of that, we have business to do as well. So let me, we've done our introductions. Let me first call for any adjustments to the agenda. I've got a couple, I think.
I don't agree.
Okay. The first of those is a small one, but we have no board minutes from May 1. So we'll be reviewing and approving board minutes for April 19th and May 8. And then when we get down to new business, I think we should, at least I propose, to move the purchase of the new bus up to the first item because it would not be an executive session. And then we would have a resignation and an appointment, discussion, an executive session, along with a board training. And we'll get to that and the timing of that when we actually have a meeting to move into executive session. Let's see if there are any communications and public comments.
Don't see it.
All right. So we get to dive into the first of the reports. And let me make this one comment about that, Andrew. We have now gotten a bit more pressured about actually having quarterly reports against goals that the SU Board has established for the superintendent. So we have actually the quarterly report that will be up the air this month tonight. So I look forward to that. Andy, please.
Sure. So as I sent out my report, you know, it's going, it's full year to year and allows us an opportunity to pause and reflect on the year. Much of the progress this year could be found in the May update of my superintendent's goal. However, I'd like to acknowledge the success so far this year has been mostly contributed to the dedication of every staff member within WNESU organization. There have been many ups and downs this year with the staff as a whole has remained focused on the most important aspect, our students. It's significant to note that the COVID-19 pandemic has been labeled officially over at the writing of this, like right around that time we're officially over. But the ramifications for our students will be long lasting. The ending of the pandemic does not negate the loss of learning our students have suffered. And I included an NPR article that really just talked about some studies that have been done recently around lots of learning around pandemics and just the long-term effects. I'll dive into the, just the goals real quick in a minute, but just a couple of quick things. The DT cap, which is the new status set that replaced S back, we're finishing up those testing. There've been a couple of hiccups. We weren't surprised to have hiccups, but Richie Adams and his team has really helped us weather through all of that. We were going to be jumping, we've been into, but moving into our MAPS data, that is our local self, our local assessment that we do three times a year with our students. We do fall, winter, and spring. There's no school Monday, May 29th. Just want to get that out. Wednesday, June 14th is the high school award night. Thursday, June 15th is the class of 2023 graduation. We have no school June 19th in observance of Juneteenth. And then the last day of school, and this has changed a little bit, and I apologize for the confusion, you know, we had a total of five snow days this year. And then three of our buildings all had individual reasons that they had one extra day. And when we applied for waivers, we applied for those three schools, they were granted that one day. And we applied by Secretary French that the snow days or the March dates were not going to be excused. And then we started to hear that schools were being granted those days. And so I applied for them. And then there was a blanket three-day waiver on top of the waiver we got for those three individual schools from the AOE waiving three days. So that all happened very recently. And so the last day of school for students is Tuesday, June 20th. That's an early release day. And then the last day for certified staff would be Wednesday, June 21st. And there was just an update on radon testing that we are required to do. And that is something that locally we are required to do. There's no state assistance with that testing. So we'll be working towards that. And then we have next year's school calendar as part of my report. The capital improvements update, we just finished the pre-qualification for construction management companies. And now we've sent out a request for bids for these companies. And then the bids are due the first week of June. And then we can unfortunately, we'll most likely apply for a bid waiver because we won't have enough bids back. But I've been working with the AOE. We should get a quick turnaround on that. Once we have a construction management company on board, which will bring back those bids to the WNESU Board for approval prior to granting, awarding a grant, awarding the bid for that, then we can begin work. And then just some administrative position updates. The Rockingham School Board approved the hiring of Megan McFarlane as the new Assistant Principal at the middle school. Very excited to have Megan be joining us from Lebanon School District. It's exciting how much she's already taken on in a couple of weeks just since hiring her. So it's great she's going to be in district tomorrow, I believe, for the arts thing at the middle school. So that's really great. And then just an update on the principal search. We had two candidates move forward from the committee, Kelly O'Rey and Mark Peroni, Parentoni, pardon me. Ms. O'Rey is currently the Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion within our district. And Mark is an administrator at Littleton, New Hampshire. Both candidates were at the high school Monday, met with students and staff. And then they're coming back next Wednesday for a meet and greet and answer questions, do a small presentation to community members. So they'll each have a half an hour for that. And then we set aside about 20 minutes for the high school board to meet separately with each one of them. We wanted the board to have that opportunity to meet with them. So just jumping into the goals, just on an update, I won't go into a lot of the others. I want to save some time for, most of the time for Deb and her presentation with the folks that are here.
Jennifer, another.
And Jennifer, yes. So I'm developing a five-year strategic plan for improved student achievement, which is one of the goals. We've been working on a recovery plan. That was the big thing. A few board members were involved, lots of community members. We began that work back in 2021. The state in its wisdom allowed us to use recovery plan as part of our continuous improvement plan. And then this year decided that we should go back to a continuous improvement plan. So we've had to move back. It should, some of it's formatting, but there are some different areas of focus. But we started working with Focus Schools back in 2021, which was a consultant to bring in. They helped us walk through the recovery plan and build into recovery plan. We've now moved into instructional leadership teams where we meet monthly and then Focus Schools meets individually with the schools and the principals. It's really about shared leadership and distributed leadership, working through building goals. But we also have a district level. And it's all aligning, bringing everything into alignment around our academic goals that we're trying to work to improve. And so I included in the link a draft that we're working on for a strategic plan. I won't go into detail. We're really looking for feedback on that. So if people have feedback and want to read through it, please let us know. And then as far as the maintenance and improvement of facilities, we, earlier this year, we had a engineering company come out, inspect all of our buildings. They provided us with detailed plans for each one of our buildings. I provided those to the building and asked each building now to go back and start using that document to start building their five-year plan and including some facility improvements that they're looking to do. And so schools are at various points right now, but have begun working on that. Bless you. And then we also have been working on a, we have a capital improvements project with Steve Portman, who's our owners, project manager. And I've provided you with, that's a working document, that schedule that we're updating as we go along, just mapping out projects. And then we had a goal, which was to increase and improve internal and external communications. Kate O'Connor, who's our communications specialist, has been working on developing an SUY communications plan, which is, there's a hyperlink in there also. Again, looking for feedback because that plan is currently in draft. But the idea is to, how do we increase our ability to communicate with the community at large through social media, but also just in how we're messaging things out to the community and making sure we're doing that consistently, but also in the right ways. We've also worked on social media guidelines so that we are consistent in our branding, our posting, and our presence on social media. And that's not just for the SU, but for all of our staff and making sure that we're consistent there. Then we're going to be launching a new platform for communication with students and families. I believe the product is actually called Remind. And that's used already. Jennifer's giving a hoo-hoo. Some of our schools are programming, are using it already. It's an app that allows you to text message back and forth. So parent would have to download the app onto their phone. But what it allows us is a paper trail, if you will, of those communications. Because right now, if a parent texts me on my personal cell, there's, unless you grab my personal cell and, you know, subpoena everything, there really isn't that opportunity for the district to monitor that piece and be in charge of that. So keeps it all kind of clean in on the up and up. So that's really one of our big pieces that we've been working on. With social emotional learning, this has been a huge step for us this year. We know it's our kids coming back in from the pandemic. It's been an area that we've really tried to focus on. Shelley Wilson and Carrie Newton have really been big in this part. One of the things we launched this year is CARES, which is Coordination Assessment, Response, and Education. And that allows for the coordination of support services around a student in Athens before we get to even where we're developing an educational support plan for students. So we're trying to meet the student before, the needs of the student, before we even get to the point of developing a plan. So a lot of it has to do with attendance, but academics, how the students do it, behaviorally, how the student's doing, and what supports can we put in place? And so we're seeing a lot of traction on that. And the other piece is that we're working out procedures for, some schools are calling reboot rooms or reset rooms, restored practice rooms in each building where students can work and getting, if they're dysregulated in a classroom, they can go to that spot, get reconnected, and then return to their academics without really, before they're getting escalated to a discipline manner. So this summer, we are sending teams from many of our buildings to the best institute. And that's an opportunity. It's a five-day outfit coming in where teams just really get to sit together, but also work on developing deeper plans around social emotional learning for students. Another piece that I did neglect, I just want to mention in there, we're also partnering with, it's a local organization called We Are Hope. And it's we, and then an are, hope. And they provide coaching in the building for identified students and really around students before they become real high flyers on our radar, so to speak. If that's the best way to put it. We really focused on the middle school. But what that does is the coach, we identified 12 students, and they work around anxiety with those students. And they do 30-minute sessions every day with the student for a six-week period, doing assessment. And then after the assessment, after that six weeks period is done, they do a reassessment. If the student is in a good spot, they move them off their roster and we add a new student on. So we piloted that program this year at the middle school and at the high school. We saw a lot of traction at the high, at the middle school. So we're going to try and reallocate even more resources to the middle school this coming year. And we think it, you know, it's been very successful for our kids, but around that social emotional piece. Developing administration and support staff, develop supervision of administrators and support staff. So I provided you with copies of all of the different evaluation tools we're using for building administrators. In fact, we do a fall and a spring evaluation. And part of that has to do with a, like a 316 survey feedback. We'll be launching that, I believe, tomorrow for the building principals that'll go out to all of our stakeholders looking for feedback. And then on top of that, administrators will get a written summative evaluation before June 30th. And then this year, we worked on developing a teacher supervision and evaluation plan. And so I think there's, you know, an opportunity there. We launched this year to look at retooling it a little bit, how we need to do it. And then there was also a paraprofessional performance plan. And again, I think this was the first year of launching it. So there's some opportunities to go back and look at what needs to be retooled so that we can be more effective and a useful tool. But we wanted to get those things out this year. Developing a plan for helping healthy schools that are healthy for students and staff. So this has been a real focus around that. That goes really around safety when we talk about healthy schools. And so one of the things we really launched this year using some of our Esther funds is updating our camera systems in all of our buildings. So they've been, the companies have been pulling wires lately. So that's usually the first thing you have to do. But all buildings will get a heavy dose of cameras. We won't be everywhere, but outside and inside buildings, we've got good, very good coverage. Some buildings have had a couple of cameras and they're going to have quite a few more to do that coverage. But then what that also involves is retooling all of the main entrances and some additional entrances to be key fob entrances so that staff don't need to have keys. They actually have, it'll be part of the badge system. And so they can go up to the door. If you're familiar with the high school, there's a fob system at the high school. That system will be deployed at all of our buildings. And so it's just an opportunity to, you know, when Ms. Kane wants to come in on Sunday morning and work and do that stuff, she can come in and she can fob in and it'll record that she's come in. And so it's a safety feature, but it also, she doesn't need to have a key. So if she loses her badge, we can turn off that fob and we can issue her a new fob right away. So that'll happen in all of us. In addition, Saxons River and Westminster schools, we identified through our work with Mark Moody and Rob Evans. Mark Moody was from Visbit and Rob Evans was from the state, both security experts, that those two schools lack the feature where anyone coming in, once they're in the building, they can go anywhere very quickly. And there's opportunities to work on all of our schools, but those two schools, I think, they really identify as some real breaches where Westminster, there's not a direct line of sight for the office when they let someone in. That was one of the first problems. And at Westminster, while they have a window to see it, if someone walks in those main doors, they're in the building and there's no, you know, there's a, quite a distance before someone can really stop them. So we're looking at some, adding some enhancements where they might move offices around so they go in a side door and stuff like that. So we'll be bringing those back to those individual boards with those features. So that's been a big piece there. So the other one is, the last goal was on fiscal responsibility. I think as we all know, that it's been some troubling times the last couple of years. I have to say Jim Bizina has been worth his weight in gold in trying to dig us out of a hole that we have been in. And it is constantly, every time we go to pick up a coffee cup or something, there's another problem. And we're constantly fixing that. And we're constantly trying to find ways to get caught up into things. And it's been, it's been, it's been a real lift, but he's really gotten us to a point where we're starting to see a light at the end of the tunnel. But we're moving to a new accounting system, July 1, Infinite Visions, which is the newer product of what we used to have before E-Finance. And so his team has been working pretty hard on that migration and looks like we're all set for July 1. Fingers crossed I say that. But then we're, we're also looking at some other programs. Our current program subs online, which is the online program that's used when a, you know, a teacher calls out sick and gets a sub. It is sunset early going away. The company went out of business. And so we have to find a new company. So we've been reviewing many different products. And they all, all the bells and whistles that they have. Excuse me. But one of the pieces that they, that really looks exciting is both of that, all the products we've looked at have the ability to merge time sheets, the subs piece, and payroll. So right now, the human capital that's involved in trying to process payroll is a huge time consumption. And so the ability to stream all of that into one system is something we're really excited about. And with the, the time sheet piece, it's usually referred to as like time sheet plus or something, you know, it's a product name. But what that allows us to do is we could have every employee clock in essentially. We would know when they're in a building for safety purposes. But it would allow us, if we have an itinerary feature or a teacher who moves from building to building, or moves from different programs to, like an after-school program, they can clock in and actually track their hours of how much time they're spending each one of their programs. So if someone's allotted a certain number of hours for a grant program after school, they can clock in and actually track those hours. Those hours can then, that can get pulled into a professional development that they might need. But it also can help us just understand how much time is actually being spent in different areas. So we're really excited about those opportunities. So that's what I have for reporting. Take questions or?
Well, I guess, and I'm looking at the time and recognizing that we've got a couple more reports before we move into this executive session. But I urge everybody to read the comprehensive report that is sent with all of the links to the recovery plan, to the whole contract picture about capital improvement, some kind of thing. So I think, I, a couple of things, but I think we should move ahead, if that's okay, to hearing from Deb and not take questions right now for Andy, if that's all right with everybody. Okay. And then I noticed that I missed the approval of minutes, so we'll pick that up shortly. Anyway, would you please introduce Deb?
Yeah. So Deb Carden, if you have not met her already, she's extraordinary fantastic. And it's been. I'll have to say this real quick. When we hired Deb, everyone said, she'll push you, Andy. And I have to say that it's a push in a good way, right? It's helpful to have someone who's smarter than you because they really help you become a better person. So I'm building up.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for having us. Thanks for giving the time. I'm really happy to be here. And I'm happy to have two colleagues with me. So this is Carrie Pickering from Central and Kate Kane from Central Elementary, not from Early Ed. And he's getting our PowerPoint up there. And here we go.
Kathy, can you see that?
Yes, I got it.
Okay, here we are. So. Overview of what we're going to do. So we're going to move pretty quickly through the first part because I really want to get to the teaching. What assessment? Think you wanted to hear about that you wanted to really understand how this assessment. So I'm going to give you the thirty thousand foot view and then a little example. So this is, as Andy mentioned, MAP assessment. So measure academic press is district wide local assessment. Summit of assessment, which means it's really measuring broad strokes. What I'm showing, what I'm sharing with you is one of the three reports that MAP offers of district, you know, meaning district. And this is a report where MAP projects students will do extensive studies and how closely they align. And they can be very close to predicting students' achievement, including with S A T scores. And they can, they can go far. So we're going all the way back to twenty one, twenty two. This is winter, not this past winter, but a year ago. MAP projected that twenty three point three percent of our students were proficient in math. This is taking it math on the S spec. S spec is the states. Here we are in spring last year, S spec, our state scores. Unfortunately, access to S spec scores have gone away. State just even disappeared. And, but luckily for us, the board asked for, various boards have asked for. So this is a report that I thought earlier this year, of our students' math scores in S spec last. Do you want to pause and say that we are going to allow time? Quick question and answer. It's not pretty, but we're going to end it. So twenty, twenty point zero two percent were proficient last spring on the S spec. Pretty close relationship with that MAP. These are grade levels across the various districts, our district, the state. And numbers represent percentage of students. So here we are, this S spec. So twenty four point three percent of our students in S spec were projected to be proficient in that. We won't know if that's accurate. Did not administer S spec. Be an interesting study to see how we, I don't think we get our students to be in assessment. So, and, and so this is that, that, that broad view, that thirty, it's, there's not a lot to do with this information other than to feel good about ourselves. I think it's a disheartening set of numbers. And we keep going. We're going to take a look at it. Winter, back again to that winter twenty one, twenty two. Thirty seven point seven percent were projected to be proficient in S spec. Now we're talking E L A. Spring last year, two percent, pretty close. Again, looking across grade levels, you can see there are some grades closer to the state average than others. Past winter, thirty four percent. Dicted to be proficient in S spec. So that's the most recent assessment information. Unfortunately, we're in the midst of our spring administration. So we don't have spring scores yet. We won't have S spec, we will have our math scores. And I'm going to introduce you to another set of assessments. Before we go there, I want to take a minute and just give you a chance to pose a question, pose my question. So that, I loved my past working with team because. And she's going to take notes for us. And this is really what a data meeting feels like when we meet and do our colleagues. We take time to actually talk about the data. I know we don't have a lot of time, but if you don't want to get us to crack, I invite you to notice something about what we just looked at or wonder. Team's going to capture those in her insights. I. So we're going to pose these questions and I can try and answer some. Myself, I am fairly aware, they looked, they, they. Is proficient and not proficient? Good question. One, two, three, four, right? They get a score. One and two are considered not proficient. Three and four considered proficient. Three, you met the benchmark, four, you look similar. And two will have a. You don't, and you also don't see if a kid, if I'm a student and I'm at the very bottom of the. I grow a bunch of homes to green. So that's that thirty thousand foot, things are blue. You can't really, you know, like it's hard to really make a lot of judgments. Yeah, and they still just read us. And those kids included in this, who are the deers, who are the kids that are managing. The kids that aren't on the program. These are all over.
So is there ever a time where we take? And we have a percentage of children that, who are Chinese kids, but we seem to have. Where are ethnic kids? And trying to. The kids that aren't ethnic kids, I don't know. Where do they start to be proficient?
Not that I can't, like I.
Do you ever measure that to find out? Because we have a group of kids who aren't. They're going to be allowed the freedom you would sustain with. But what about the rest of those kids that hopefully are really moving up the scale to a career or to a college? I mean, how do we know that we have other kids that are proficient? Because a lot of our kids are needs kids, so they suck them under them. I, uh, those numbers look terrible to me. Terrible. But, but I've also been at these tables long enough to know and listened to you folks long enough to know that there's a lot of kiddos in our district that are at a lower level income, that are, that aren't, they're not, not all of Dan's daughter. And I'm sorry for that because I wish they all could be because I think every kid deserves as much as they can get. But how do we know that the kids out of that level are proficient?
I think.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And I know Andy, I think it looks like Andy wants to say something too, but in my mind, there's a couple of ways. We, we want to get really good at using, we want to get really good at using data to know as much as we possibly can about our kids so that we can meet them in their different ways, right where they're at. And so I think there's a question of.
Are we there?
Are we there? Yeah. So we're going to show you some of the different data points that we're using now that get a little, that get much more discreet at what we can. You know, what do we want our kids, what do our kids need to know in order to be able to read and do all the things that we want them to be able to do when they? Right? But right now we're talking about reading. Yeah.
So. Probably when Molly said it's terrible, I don't think it's. And I'm disappointed, you know, when we were just, we just had me at the high school. There were several members of the N E A showed up and told us point blank, it's not all about the. It's not all about, you're telling me it's about the debt. So which is it? And if Ramon is looking at one, six grades, it's forty three percent, forty three percent, and we're at thirty nine? That is terrible. It's not funny.
I agree. I totally agree. I want, what I want to do is pause this because I want to show you what we're doing. That was the thirty thousand foot view. Now I want to dig in and show you some of what we're doing in order to get closer to the knowledge that we need to meet the case.
Yeah, I, I just, if I could just push, you know, push back a little bit, my, um, just because a student is disadvantaged, marginalized or on an I E P, and I just want everyone to know. Like a student may be on an I E P for a behavior, but that doesn't mean academically that they're behind. It could be. Or they could be on an I E P or have a disability in reading, but be fine in mathematics. So to pull, just to say, because the kid's on the I E P, we can't just extract that kid from our data set. Or just because a kid is, has an intact family, doesn't mean they did really well on this test. And, and that's the hard part of the concern. One of the things MAPS does allow them to do though is look at kids who score in that top percentile. Are we still pushing them? Because if you're in the ninety nine percentile, how can you go higher? Well, we have a duty to keep pushing that kid higher, right? So, so that's what, when we get unpacking this data, that's the next piece. That's a really understanding where the individual is in the growth. Because that's more important really, is the individual student growth. So the student, if I'm a, if I'm a student and I'm at a, uh, uh, in the red and I make a growth into the yellow and I made a thirty percent increase, I still am sucking down the S U's numbers, but I made, we should be celebrating that kid's, that kid made a huge growth. And that's more important.
So I might use a moment to turn.
Yeah.
No, no. But I'm just, you know, there is a, there's a threshold. Right. That's what I guess what I'm trying to ask. Is all these different levels of children. Is that why our numbers look bad?
Well, and I want to say, I, I, when we think about personalized learning plans, right, when we think about how do we meet kids, we, we need to get up close to them. So when, we can get lost talking about these very big, broad scale measurements. But what I really would love to get to is how are we really looking at individual kids in order to address their needs then? Up close. So we're trying to get closer, which I think is a new movement in this district. So do we need that kind of testing movement? Well, let's get, let's get there. Go ahead.
Some of the folks that have been for a long time, seeing Molly's family, who's to see this data, but this. That's what they're asking.
Yeah.
And we used to disaggregate for kids who were pre used. Uh, so we're. And I do this. And that is required, I think we may still be in the law. So I think that's what they're asking.
Yeah.
You're, you're used to seeing disaggregated data and instead we're seeing a big lump. And it's hard to. You said it, you can't tell anything because I agree, you can't tell a damn thing what the difference is. But disaggregated, we start to see some of those groups are doing differently. And that is what we haven't seen.
Yeah, and it's, it's something I agree with you a hundred percent on. The MAP system right now isn't set up to do that, so there's some tweaking we need to do on the back end.
I just wanted to ask for the prediction.
Well, I was going to, I was going to ask about the margin between.
S spec. You see that story on the web?
It's gone already.
So what is?
It's called B T cap. What we're doing right now is this state, the new state assessment.
You hear Cognizant going around also, that's the company that owns, that produces it.
Um, I, I want to say two things. One is that I can see why Molly said that the way she said it because even at the last board meeting, there was a lot, it made me actually pretty uncomfortable. There was like a lot of, we come, we're in a district with like kids who like, it was like trash top kids, like they're low kids, they have so much disadvantage, like whereas these are all, and then the problem I see with constantly looking at data that's disaggregated, there is some value to that. But it also says like, well, these kids are, you know, they have these plans, so we don't really expect anything of them. So that's okay that they didn't get that. And I think that looking at, they're all our kids, we want them all to be proficient. And so I think there's value in disaggregating data and looking at like, where can you do better? But I also don't want it to be like, well, we didn't expect them to do well anyway because we know more about how the brain learns, we know more about what's, what works. Teachers are constantly learning, just like your doctor, who is constantly learning. It should look different than it did fifteen years ago. So I think we need to be cognizant of how we talk about the children in this.
I agree with what you said very much. I think, I'm, I'm not a big fan of disaggregation necessarily. I think, I think my takeaway here is that any results are not good. I particularly note the difference between our scores and the state's scores. Those are, that to me is a benchmark. It is, which you can realize is something, and you can say, hey, look at, maybe we have twenty percent of special ed and the state average is seventeen or sixteen or somewhere like that. So maybe we should be just a little bit lower. But I think that the issue is for me is there's bad results, particularly given the relationship to the state. And quite frankly, I think when we do superintendent roles, when we talk about student achievement, I think we have to have metrics in there. That would have been just stateless. But we need to have metrics in there to measure, to improve. What I'm looking for as a, as a director is improved. Not to be the best, we expect to be the best. We want to see improved and I want that to be embedded in all of our teachers and all of our students. That they, that the expectation is improved.
I fully agree. And so I, what I feel like for us to see improvement, I'm going to, are you? I was going to hand it over, but you. To see improvement, we need to be measuring the right things, right? And we need to be able to see, so I, let's move toward some things that we've put into place to give you a sense of where we're moving. Because yeah, those scores aren't where we want to live as a district. And so how do we change them? Something that we've started, it started two years ago, before I was here, but we were using this in Southeast as well, was beginning to use a broader collection of tools. So we've started using this tool called Dibbles. Dibbles is Dynamic Indicator for Basic Early Literacy Skills. That's an assessment tool that has a variety of, of, I'll, I'll repeat it, dynamic indicators for basic early literacy skills. So that tool. So that tool has been around for twenty years. And instead of getting this thirty thousand foot view, we get individual discreet skill-based information that then we can use to drive our instruction. And there's a variety of ways we use it. So one way, first, we use it as a screener. We administer it to all of our kids, and we identify who's at risk. Who are the kids that we're going to identify that might be struggling? Much like you would use sand going through a screen, right? You put a screen, you want to catch the gold. Sand comes through, the gold stays in the screen. That's where that screener works. So we're using a tool to do that three times a year.
Oh goodness.
Can't change this.
He's trying to arm the goal.
All right. So there's the screener, same tool, DIBELS. We also use to then take and look at kids' results diagnostic. So here's an example of a DIBELS result. Starting last year, beginning of the year, red is kids at risk. Green and blue are kids who need intervention. I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, but I do want you to look at the. If you look, beginning of the year last year, beginning of the year this year.
BOI is beginning of the year.
End of year last year, or middle of year last year, middle of year this year. You can see there's a small trend going down of kids who are at risk. But this is just used for us to narrow in and say, okay, who do we need to focus more closely? Go ahead, Andy. Then we dig in with diagnostics, much like when you go to a talking, a blood test, right? We want to know, what is it that is making kids? What's that twenty-three percent coming from? Why are kids struggling? This is the why. So we collect information about their student, about their skills. DIBELS provides information about individual skills. This is where we get up close. How are our kids doing? Why are they not scoring well on these broader assessments? Things like letter sounds. Do they know them? We can say, okay, fifty-eight percent of our kids needed support in letter sounds, and we delivered it. This is an example at the bottom of a teacher's record of their kids at the beginning of the year in the fall, tracking the letter sounds that they knew. Moving to winter, same thing, letter sounds that my students know. As you can see, there were some kids that came in knowing some things. That's that green at the bottom. And then as the winter came, instruction started to come into play. But we still have that little group, that little red strip right there. Our kids, that regular instruction wasn't quite working right. So we need to dig deeper. And this is another example of a very small skill that relates to reading that leads to kids being challenged by reading and scoring poorly on those assessments. We're tracking that now. We're giving them fall and winter assessments and tracking the skills that they can do and can't do, so that we know how much and what kind of instruction. I'm going to be really brief here, but this is a series of steps that teachers are moving through. And you are going to hear about this directly from Kate and Carrie. Where we start with a screener, we move to diagnostics, we deliver interventions associated with that diagnostic tool that measured that exact skill. And then we revisit and come back together. Kate and Carrie have done an amazing job with that, and they're entertaining. All right. So we're going to tell it, tell you about it through a picture of one student. So this is one of my second grade students. She's been at Central since kindergarten. She's a very happy girl. She arrives every morning with a great big smile on her face. Can't wait to be there. She's very friendly. Typical peer relationships for a second grader. She's a very hardworking student, and she's very proud of her academics. But all of her, all of, very proud of her accomplishments, excuse me. Her academics are challenging for her in every area. Math, reading, writing, crossing the border, they're challenging. But when she learns something, she hangs on to it and is extremely proud of herself. So we took a look at her DIBELS fall benchmark. And as you can see, circle of the area was three oh nine, well below. She was well below in all the areas below, just along the floor. We knew that we needed to. So we set a goal. Myself as a second grade teacher and the interventionist who looked at the second grade, who was Carrie, to work together to build a common literacy approach as a team. Traditionally, or the way it's worked for many years is that the classroom teacher teaches. Whoever screens and needs intervention goes to the interventionist. And there's really no communication between the classroom teacher and the interventionist. So our goal was to work together to better serve our students. And we, we'd met every other week, Thursday morning, seven AM. We met myself, the interventionist, and Deb to work on this, um, minded approach to literacy. So in the fall, this is what we started with in the fall. I was doing whole class phonological awareness instruction, which is playing with sounds. So for example, I might, this is something that they've worked toward, but.
I just like doing these.
Yeah. Like, if I say shown, the kids say shown. And then I say, change O to it, and it becomes shin, something like that. So it's all kinds of, you know, removing sounds, adding sounds, taking words apart, various, various things, but all at the sound level. There's no letters, no writing, and you guys all hearing these sounds. And then in, in the classroom, three times a week, she met with a small group for a reading instruction. And in the fall, we were using Fontes and Penel correcting materials, which, um, which are very much sight word based. So you, or you learn from a context, or it's what's called the three cueing systems. You can learn from the pictures of the context, the structure of the sentence, what kind of word might fit, or the visual, look, actually looking at the word. But, um, but that's where we were in the fall. So then in October, she came to us every day. It's a small group, and it was leveled literacy. Still, we were using Fontes and Penel. So as we moved along from fall to winter, I began to add, just through research on my own, talking with this team and so forth, we began adding a lot more formal, explicit, whole group phonics instruction. So for twenty to thirty minutes a day, we would, um, play with those sounds. But actually, now we were moving to phonics, where the sounds were matched to letters. Like those cards over on the side, you know, that they, they, they knew that like A, apple, app, B, bat, buh, and so forth. And then you can see the diagrams down at the bottom. And then there's many, many more cards. Those are actually from foundations, one of a different phonics program, or literacy program. And then on the, on the right side, there's just two different ways that we would build words. So the top one is an online word building, um, board. And the kids can come up to the board and just move letters. And those are, those would be places where like, I would say, um, let's see. You know, build the word cub, right? Can somebody change cub to tub or something like, you know, things like that, where they would be manipulating?
But that's all right.
Yeah. All right. So, and then, and then just the, the magnetic letters below are just another way that they're manipulating letters. So they're putting the sounds with the letters and working together.
So now it's time to do the winter DIBELS benchmark. And you notice that to the right of the circle, she's, she's improved. She's improved a lot, but we still are struggling with decoding and phonics skills. So that's where our goal is now.
And just to chime in, that, that idea of still struggling with phonics skills, without an assessment that looks specifically at those, we wouldn't have seen that. Correct. Yeah. We might see the, the, like, meeting, the green area and think, oh, wow, she's doing well. But Fontes and Penel, again, is like a whole word, looking at the whole word rather than taking it apart. If you're going to build a good reader, kids have to be able to take words apart, recognize parts of words in bigger words, so forth. So that's really a showing that, hmm, she's doing okay with Fontes and Penel. But really being able to see that the phonics are not strong for her. Yeah. Oh, was this me? Sorry. So then additionally, in January, I gave Words Their Way Primary Spelling Inventory, which is like a spelling test. But what you do after you give the test, it's very thoughtfully, the lists are very thoughtfully created. After you give the test, you, you basically pick it apart and determine where the weaknesses are. So we can see, looking at this, that, um, she was solid with her initial consonants and her final consonants, but her short vowels were a little weak and her blends were weak. So a blend is like a, you know, CL, cool. As opposed to a digraph, which is two letters that make a single sound, like SH makes sh. So she was weaker in the short vowels and blends, and then very weak in the digraphs. The, the three to the right are not necessarily something that we would even have been solidly working on in January. And then Deb did the, I did a quick phonological awareness test just showing that we didn't have that word for her. She was fine. The zeros were no errors.
Okay. So then we decided from winter to spring that in our meetings, we were going to work to align phonics instruction across tiers. We were going to do the same thing that Kate was doing at the same time. So we got the codable PEX, our method shifts focusing on word level decoding and less on the comprehension. And we aligned our scope and sequence between classroom and intervention. And made a difference, made a difference. This is progress monitoring, which I do with her. September, she was well below. We continued on that same path with those books, and she was getting lower. We shifted, and you can see her progress going right up. So this is one student, but we worked hard and.
Yeah. And this is the, the spring spelling inventory, the same spelling inventory that she put in January, just given this week. And you can see that she's now solid with her short vowels and her blends and digraphs are much higher. And again, the, the latter three are the areas that we're still working on as a whole class. So she has made, we're, we're excited about her progress. She is thrilled with her progress. And you, if you were to talk with her and she's reading something, she's, she's picking out chunks of words. That's a welded sound, you know, that's, that's a digraph, you know, whatever. She's, it's really fun to see her, to have her read with you because she's so excited about what she knows about reading and language now.
Are you having questions?
Well, I want to be mindful of time, and I wonder if there's a way to capture questions without taking more time, and I want to make sure we have pre-K time. Right, exactly. Well, restate what you just said. I just want to make, be mindful of time. I wish there was a way to capture, I don't know if it's, I could, you could email, and we could pop them into a slide deck or something without taking up this time. So I know you guys have a training, correct? Right. We, we do with all of, first of all, thank you. Thank you to all of you for coming to us with that presentation. And, you know, this is clearly a challenging agenda, as it turns out now, with so much that we're trying to get accomplished tonight. So let me ask you what the will is. We do have Sean Chewie, the attorney, who is here now, ready to be working with us. We clearly have a lot of questions. One of the things that comes up for me, and I'll put it in the room, is that for me, this is an example of the value of a retreat, something that Jigs hasn't always been really excited about. But where you have a series of topics that you want to get into in depth to really inform the board members around things that inform our policy. So I would just say, this gave us a taste tonight of some very important stuff. And I am open to people's recommendations. I think that we, we do have items of business that we have to get done tonight. I don't know what, the bus question has to be resolved. Can that at least be put toward the end of the meeting?
It could be, yeah.
With, with that, I think we need to hear an update on the pre-K situation just so board members get that current information. And then I believe, you know, we'll be paying for Mr. Chewie's time from the time that he got here. So we, we should be aware of that as well. I, I apologize for this being maybe too full an agenda, but this is in part what we had. We had it scheduled to have some of these topics, and then we also knew that we wanted to put in some of the professional and training for the, for the board. So maybe get a few questions that, that we'll, we'll get Deb to come back to us with. But put the questions on the table. We don't get answers right now. I'll go first.
That's a harsh statement.
Okay.
We have a lawyer running the clock. I think that we should try to stop the bleeding.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any quick questions you'd like Deb to give?
I just have one quick question. That student example that you gave, is that student on an IEP? Would that be a student that was on an IEP? She's a part of a functioning, regular classroom. Well, that's impressive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's like tier one, which is the classroom, and tier two, which is intervention. So she's not accessing any tier three, which is special education.
That's, that's impressive. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we're trying to jam your presentation because I can tell I'm excited. Excited to chat about it. That's wonderful for us to get insights to it. So, you know, if there is an opportunity to hear more about that, I'd love to hear more about it. So, thank you.
And so our IEPs are in the classroom.
Yes, yes. So, yeah, yeah, that's, sorry, I didn't understand. But yes, like, I do have students who are on IEPs, but they are in the classroom for tier one instruction. And then they receive tier three instructions.
That student, an IEP student, she's not been identified as dyslexic or on an IEP or, okay.
And, and this is where we're going. This is the direction we're going for all students. For all students, what are we forcing up?
I look at so, sorry, I never did that. I look at so much data. I think if this student probably were to continue without getting the instruction that she needed, she very well could have ended up on an IEP.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Is the lawyer on the screen or?
Molly, sorry.
He's on the screen somewhere.
We'll be back. Yeah. Thanks. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Kate, Carrie, thank you.
Yes, sir. Jennifer, what's your pleasure? Come all the way here tonight.
Whatever you want. I can come back with people. But I knew this was going to happen, but I heard something short. Okay, go ahead. Okay.
I'll brought up it then.
Okay. So I have, I have it in paper because I know some people prefer paper. I know it was emailed to you, and it will be on the screen. I'm Jennifer Pena. I run the early ed programs and the early ed program principal. As most of you know, we are using Medicaid funds next year to expand pre-K program. This is a two-year pilot with no taxpayer expense. We're adding a classroom. We currently have two. Beginning in the fall, we'll have three. The second one at Central Elementary School. And both, everything everywhere will have a full school day, full school week option for families. We began the application process, which is part of the requirement under the pre-K law. It's called Act 166. People also call it U K for universal pre-K. We began the application process, and families had to return their application by the due date. And our procedure was that four-year-old children, four by September first, were, got preferred placement with consideration for children in percentages related to the percentage of the district membership in the SU. Families had different choices, had the ability to choose preferred location, either the Westminster site, which is in Westminster Secondary School, or the Bellas Falls site, which is in the Central Elementary School, as well as the schedule. Part day, part full, or the full week, full school day, school week, et cetera. So what happened is after the due date, every single four-year-old who, well, the first thing we did was our, we're sending a bunch of course off to kindergarten. Boom, there yours. And then our current three-year-olds all got what they wanted next year. Some wanted to switch sites, some wanted schedules, all of that. And they got what they wanted. And then we looked at the applications, and every single four-year-old got what they wanted. By this location and the schedule that they wanted, which made me really happy. And after that, we looked, turned to the three-year-old applications that were in by the due date. And many got their preferred location and schedule. Some had their less preferred location, but their preferred schedule. As things shifted, some families who got spots decided to do something different. They went to private programs, or they just did other things. There was some random selection, which we have a random selection process. I'm laughing because it involves texting Andy and telling him to pick a number. But anyway, we have a random selection process and so that, we use that to place threes and things. So you can see on this document, it says as of today, that's because things were shifting right up until today at that quarter of May. And they will continue to shift. So as of today, every single public site applicant, both the ones who've got their applications in by the 17th and the ones that have been trickling in since, is placed in the public site. So my folder, my folder, Darcy, is empty. Makes me really happy. I'm sure there'll be more applicants. The Westminster site is currently full and the Bellas Falls site has three empty slots. You heard it here first. It's very exciting. So I made this chart of how many students there are and what towns they resided. Both charts are the same kids. If you look, the math is all the same. I just divided it by age on the bottom. There's 38 total students, top left corner. Fifteen of those students are children who chose part day, part week. They wanted, for the families, they wanted their children to come either part week or part day. Some are coming five days a week until 11:30. Some are coming two days. Some are coming three days. Anyway, 38 students total. You can see 20 are from Rockingham, 17 are from Westminster, one is from Grafton. No one applied from Athens. We had two applicants from Grafton and they both got in. And one family decided it actually works better for their family to go to a private program. So that's what they did. At the Central Elementary site, we have a total of 22 students. At the Westminster Center site, there's a total of 16. And you can look across the chart to see the residency of those students. And then I'm going fast, as promised. And this bottom chart is the same exact children. I'm just now dividing them by age. So we've got the three-year-olds. I made it grayish. Let's go see Andy's got it highlighted. But anyway, grayish for the Westminster site, just for ease on your eyes. So I've got 17 three-year-olds total and 21 four-year-olds total, and they're divided up by residency. The only other thing that I will say is that in order for all of this to work, we are working really hard to hire four additional paraprofessionals. Pre-K paraprofessionals per the state of Vermont's Childcare Licensing Regulations need to have some education credits on their resume, college credits. And that is a tricky thing. So we're really hoping that anyone you know, anyone you know out there in active land who is interested in becoming a pre-K paraprofessional, who has some experience and some training in early education, would go on school spring and apply for that job.
A very great question.
Absolutely.
And the question is this, you recruited two from Grafton, a lot of whom apparently would show up in the program, none from Athens. What is the eligible population in Athens and Grafton?
I could look that up. I have the, I keep databases for each district, birth through five. And so I have names of kids. And the way that database works, actually, here's another thing, school members. So I'll, I'll be out at playground and I'll see a mom, I've been doing this in this district for 20 years, who I know, oh, you have a stroller. Who's this? When were they born? And I can't put it in the database.
So are these kids from Athens and Grafton that you are aware of, are there barriers to their ability to access the services? And would transportation possibly be one of them?
Transportation could possibly be one of them. I have quite a few students in Athens who, although I don't, there are quite a few families in Athens and Grafton who are accessing universal pre-K funding. And I'm signing the invoices.
So their needs are met in Athens and Grafton?
Except they may not be free. Those full-time, free situations that they're accessing.
Correct. I, you know, the universal pre-K funding is 10 hours a week for the 35 weeks that school is in session. They go to a private program and the 10 hours per week during the school year is paid by their school district and the family pays the rest. And in the example of one of the families, they said, that's what we want to do. And that's their choice. I don't know. I sent letters to every family that I know in Grafton in conjunction with, I talked to school secretary, the principal, and the people at Grafton Elementary, who you know, who has babies. Okay, here it is in the database. And then we sent snail mail letters. We sent emails. And we advertised it all over. Darcy hung it on the town hall in Grafton, the post office, doctor's offices, Allen Brothers. Everywhere we could, we put up flyers and that's what we got.
Just one time question for you.
Absolutely.
Okay, of the pre-K population in Athens and Grafton, do you anticipate that you will have kindergarteners who will not have had access to pre-K who will arrive in kindergarten in Windham Northeast?
The current kindergarten that's arriving in Athens and Grafton Elementary School in the fall of 2023, every single child that's arriving there has either had preschool or their family chose not to. Some families, when we call them, they say, we're homeschooling for preschool. And that's their choice. Of the, I think it's seven, and again, I'm not, I'm going to look, the numbers are on the computer. You guys have a lawyer on the line. Of the children that are arriving at Grafton Elementary in the fall for kindergarten, every single one of them has been either in preschool or has chosen, made the choice not to.
So I think we need to wrap this up now. And let me just say that any additional questions we have, we can send them to Andy. They'll get them to you. This is a pilot program. We have a lot of questions. We need to keep track of it throughout the year. These are good questions to do some analysis and all of that. One of the immediate questions for me is if we don't find the additional paraprofessionals, would we be able to run the program? Would we be disappointing a lot of people on that basis? So we need to track all of that.
Yeah, I'll keep track of anything I need to.
Right, and so to the rest of us, you know, send our questions to Andy. He'll get them from you. And I will go forward with that. And I'm going to again say, you know, Deb and Ken, for coming in and you've had a good as well. And at this point, we need to entertain a motion to go into an executive session.
The purpose of which is to discuss some matters that are provided by the board on how to level up some of the contractual issues. We also have a personal personnel matter, which your knowledge or perspective which could put people at a disadvantage. So with that, I've heard a motion made by the honorations. I think Jim did. Is there a second?
Any discussion? All those in favor will go into an executive session. And so with that, we'll welcome the attorney.
Everybody else who's got nothing.
All right, we're out of executive session at about 8:28. And we, I'd like to entertain a motion with respect to a personnel issue as a place to begin. The motion would have to do, I'll bring it on the table and let others see whether that makes sense. That a Title I teacher at the Westminster, pardon me, Title I teacher employed by the Windham Northeast Supervisory Union, Denise Randall, is requesting to move into the role of a classroom teacher. And secondarily, a classroom teacher employed at the Westminster Center School is requesting to move into a Title I position as an employee of Windham Northeast Supervisory Union. These two actions in the motion, if approved, would be subject to approval by the Westminster School Board at their meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening. Is it also important to note that both positions were posted? So it wasn't just your request. They were posted in the interview book. And then bring a member to the motion. That would be helpful.
I think it should also be based on the superintendent's recommendation.
So prefacing all of that, based on the superintendent's recommendation, the motion is to accept these two resignations and two appointments. Right?
Oh, there's one resignation and one appointment.
No, they're each resigning their.
Well, one for this board.
Only one can happen for tonight.
Only one can happen for tonight. Thank you, Jigs. So it's the resignation of the Title I teacher, the WNESU employee, and the appointment of the other person.
Subject to.
Thank you. Okay.
So you got the motion.
Tara is your duty and I think Andy has the motion.
Yeah.
Made by team and seconded by, not that we need a second. Any, any discussion? Okay, let's see. In terms of people voting or remote party, how do you vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. And then around the room, we need SU board members. So raise your hand, those who are. Okay, and me as well. So thank you. That passes. All right, with that, we have the discussion of the bus issue. I think it's. Thank you. We have a retirement by Ann.
Boutri Tori.
Thank you. And would you read that letter?
Yeah, this is from Ann Boutri Tori. And she says, after much thought and careful consideration, I've decided to retire from my current position as literacy coach from WNESU. Please accept this letter as my formal notice of retirement. Thank you for the positive support you have provided in this difficult decision. Working in the Windham Northeast Supervisory Union has been an invaluable experience. I have developed my cherished connections with my colleagues, students, and families and hope to be able to return to serve the SU in some capacity in the near future. A huge part of my heart will always remain with the educational communities across WNESU. Please accept my gratitude for helping and make my work with students, families, and teachers so rewarding. All the best, Ann Boutri. And also noted just handwork for years with Westminster School System.
Right, and we don't need to take formal action. That is just for the record. But I'd still like to say, I think on behalf of Westminster, that we really, really cherished her service at that school for a very long time. And I know that she's made a positive contribution to the issue. All right, two other matters I think are made before we get to director's comments. And one is the bus issue and the other is my missing, you provided minutes from earlier.
So we can, real quick, just to bring up the bus issue and if we need to table it, if there's a lot of discussion and it's late, we can do that. But we had talked about using ESER funds to purchase a new school bus. We, for years, we haven't purchased a bus in quite a few ti, quite a few years. Many of our buses are getting, I think we've got about five buses over 100,000 miles at this time. And so we, we've been approved through all the ESER processes that to go ahead with the purchase of the bus. But there was some question brought up and we want to make sure that, number one, because it is over $100,000, that this is something the board, the SU board wants us to do. But at the same time, well, I've seen nothing in writing, but I've heard, which I, so what I hear a lot is passing of propane versus diesel. And you know, we have both sets of propane and diesel buses. Currently, a propane bus is running about $135,000 new to purchase. A diesel bus is about $105,000 to purchase. There are, in weighing it out, we've looked, tried to look at both pieces. LP is running higher per gallon than diesel is right now. The repair cost on propane buses is much higher than diesel. If there's a major breakdown, we have to send the bus to Maine. That's the only closest place to do that repair. So those are some of the negatives. Diesel, obviously, when the weather isn't, when it's not cooperating, have a tendency not to start all the time. They also have a higher emissions, you know, putting out of, you know, negative emissions, yeah, fossil fuels. The overall footprint of, you know, which one is using more fossil fuels? Everything I've read is propane bus actually is costing in the lifetime of it more in that piece. And the last thing I will say recently, and I've heard this from numerous people that I've talked to in the bus industry, propane buses are going boom these days. One exploded just over in New Hampshire recently. And people are getting out, bus, bus companies, when I'm trying to look into this, they, they say people are getting out of propane buses because of that. So.
Take it, you're not recommending.
However, I've heard quite a bit of scuttlebutt around propane versus, and that the board made a decision long ago that they would go in a direction that have propane buses. I can't find it anywhere in a record. So that's why I'm bringing it.
I was on the board at one time when we were all gung ho for propane buses. So, but I, I'll make a recommend, I'll make a motion if we buy the diesel bus.
There's a motion on the floor. Chris, did you want to make a comment? Right? Is a motion on the floor?
I'm surprised that LPG is more than diesel. That wasn't my information, but.
It's not. Does the cost of the bus itself?
No, no, the fuel.
Right now LP is there, it is running a little higher. That's my understanding.
Because that's how you make up the difference.
Yep.
Because it's historically been, CIM that I thought. That's how you made it up the difference because it was quite a bit less than diesel. And diesel buses now are, they actually have these catalytic converters so they give a lot less emissions. So if you want to be green, propane is still greener because.
Do we have any, we don't have any. But you can repair jobs around here. We have to take it to Maine.
But propane buses generally use less prepare. I mean, what you said is right and wrong. Propane buses also require fewer repairs. So that was, that's another reason why we did. I support.
Any other discussion?
I think we should get the pedal ones, like all the, each kid pedals for a while.
So let me call for a vote, Harding. Kathy?
Give me your opinion, Kathy.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you very much. All right. In the room, voting board members. Okay, all right. It is a diesel bus, you guys. All right. May I entertain a motion to approve the board minutes from April 19th and May 8th, please? So moved from team. Any corrections, additions to the minutes from those gym meetings? We look fine to move into this session. All right, go to, is it just simply a voting approval of the minutes, Harding?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. And voting board members in the room. Okay, thank you. The minutes are approved. And we'll do a quick round of director's comments if you feel like doing that right now. Chris?
I like the presentation from Sean Chewie. I think actually there's a lot more that people could get out of it. It was very complicated, a lot of aspects of being a board member.
Thank you. Let me, Harding, if you have any comments you'd like to make, director's comments.
For tonight.
Okay, thank you, Kathy.
No, a lot of information. I'm curious why you didn't have an electric bus or a gas bus? I'm curious why you didn't have an electric bus or a gas bus?
They cost forty thousand dollars. The quick answer was they're costly, I don't know. All right, I'm going to rather Jigs, would you like to make any comments right now?
Yes, the, with the official end of COVID pandemic or whatever, I would just like to note that one thing I know has happened is that we've had tremendous learning loss in our students as a, as a result of the information we received as directors. I am very disappointed that we aren't actively engaging or studying to engage in practices that reflect what we've learned from COVID-19. What we've learned from this epidemic. I mean, clearly, our teachers were not equipped to teach remotely. Our, our kids didn't have the devices, all of them have the devices or the connectivity. Now, we know all that now. We're spending all this money to try to rehabilitate for lost money, for lost learning. And I think it's incumbent on boards to begin to implement new practices that reflect what we've learned from this. And I know we've had examples, for example, you know, having classes, particularly at the high school, taught remotely, particularly in low census classes. And, you know, we have, we talked about snow days earlier. It's, it seems to me that we have the capacity now with everybody with devices and teachers to teach remotely. We shouldn't have to have snow days.
That's the state.
And so I, I really, I really think it's, I'm disappointed that we have not brought that up as a subject.
Senator Joe?
Thanks, Cheryl. For our next meeting, I would please like to have on the agenda a discussion about substitutes and what our policy is and how we're going to improve as a, as a district, as a SU, the number of teachers that are not in school on a, on a regular and, again, what's the policy, what's the procedure, and how we're going to improve it. And, and I just, since Brussels is not here, I want to remind Jigs to be kind.
Thank you. I will, I will say that we had it on the agenda for the next meeting, but thank you, not, not for
So as I was writing all these notes, I was thinking of Jigs, because by this time, I'm already done. First thing, when I said I'd write this down, and don't take this as a negative, hopefully, we can do a better next time. I felt like we had way too much on this agenda. I just got a couple of questions for Andrew Tor, felt like we got told no email. I think that we don't get the full benefit if we can't talk together, that's what we just heard. We just turned for an hour to the board, that we need to do this here. We need to be able to talk as a, as a board and, and be able to, and don't tell me, Andy, but what does best mean? What are we doing in Killington, what is, what is best? That, that's an acronym for something. That was one of my questions. And then I got nervous, because I got told that there was a lawyer sitting on the screen for about eighteen minutes, and I was worried, I'll, you know, I like the two dollar signs. The lawyer's presentation at the beginning, I thought was awful. And then I thought that, boy, you know, this card would have been a lot better if this had been printed out and handed to all of us, so that we could kind of follow him through and make notes on what he was saying, so that we could, so that we could, you know, take it home and have some real fire chat reading, you know, of what's, because I really, the truth is, I think we all need to, as long as David and I have been on the board, I think we need to be reminded sometimes of, you know, where we are and what we should be doing. And I think, I think the intent was very good, but I, I wish we had it so that we could make notes and be able to ask some other questions. So now that I sound like I was negative, on the positive note, we always talk about, you know, where all our kids are, and, and, you know, I don't believe everything I see on Facebook, but everybody ought to get on Facebook right now, because all the kids graduated from college, and it's pretty neat. Plymouth State graduated four kids from our 2019 class, Emily Harris, Noah Rawlings, Bridget Huggins, and Megan Banner. It was a wonderful experience. And as we watch all the kids, you know, there's, there's a lot of kids that are, that are graduating from college right now, and it's, it's pretty neat to see, because we talk about how many kids don't make it and how many kids start and don't finish. Madison Street are just graduated from college. It's a great thing that we ought to remember too, because we're always talking about, you know, that other end of the spectrum, but we had some, some pretty, pretty cool things happening for a lot of good kids from the class of 2019 right now, so I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. I'm all set, thank you. Okay.
I know Juneteenth falls on an end of two days, and some of them have a school, but I am, I was happy to see that the school is observing and acknowledging everything that's important. And I think it was great what Deb came and announced, it sounds like pre-K is off to a really good start in the whole year, so. I know that's been a lot of work for Jennifer and the other people involved, so I just appreciate all the work that's gone into that.
Thank you, and thanks to the other non-voting members of the SU board for being here tonight, really, really appreciate it. And to Molly's point, I really agree that the agenda was too full. Part of my concern around it was to get us kind of back on track in a way. And we have scheduled these reports from our various administrative leadership. And we were overdue on responding to the first quarterly report from our superintendent. So we now have that done, and we'll get a second quarter report soon. So it's, it's just a matter of trying to get us in a mode where we're thoughtfully addressing many, many issues that come to us. So my apologies for being tight, my thanks to everybody for your thoughtful participation tonight. I think our next meeting is June twenty-one, is that correct? So it would be six o'clock, and I imagine back at the high school, unless we hear
I'm hoping that we'll be back in our normal spot.
Unless we hear otherwise, I, so with that, I think we can adjourn, thanks everyone.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three, or email us at facteighteen@gmail.com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.